Sorry, we will call tonight's board meeting to order. I apologize. We are always exactly on time, but as all of us have found in modern technology, technology rules. So they had to set our passwords tonight as we were walking in the door. So that's important, incredibly important, but I apologize for us not starting on time tonight. We will move into our regular school board meeting from Monday, May 8th, 2017, and I would ask Sue to call the roll and verification of quorum.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Ebo?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
Mr. Kantoz?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Randall is excused. You have a quorum seven present.
Okay, we will move into item three, which is Pledge of Allegiance. And we have our students. Is Skylar here tonight? Skylar Solinsky. And Hayden?
He's not here.
He's not here. Hayden's not here. Cindy Torbatowski and Boy Chakowski. Okay, so when you guys are ready, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The parents, could you raise your hands, please? Thanks for coming this evening. Greatly appreciate it. You're more than welcome to spend the next couple hours with us, but if you've got other things to do, I understand. Come over here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today.
Nice job.
I love you, Sharon.
Awesome. Thank you so much, you guys. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
So we'll move into item four, which is Community Partnership and Recognition. And the first item on this agenda is amazing. Jocelyn Hee, is it pronounced Jocelyn Hee? ACT Excellence Award. Jocelyn earned a 36 on her ACT. There are less than one-tenth of 1 percent of students who earn a 36 across our country. It's the highest possible ACT composite score. So anyway, congratulations.
Well, you just said what I was going to say. Dr. Volendorf isn't with us this evening. Stand over here, Jocelyn. Quite impressive when you get a 36 on your ACT. And you know, we live in a world of standardized testing, and we can all talk about, I think at times where we are, we overtest kids, and we wonder how much we spend teaching a test and how much that's changed as it relates to how we teach in terms of public schools. What hasn't changed, however, over, I think, the many, many years is what the ACT means in our country and how we use that to judge the success of students going to college. It truly is the one standardized test that has a great level of merit that we use each and every year with high school students in terms of where they stand as it relates to post-secondary education. I think I've been a superintendent, well, I have been a superintendent for 18 years, and I think in of my 18 years, this is the second time that somebody that received a 36, which, one of the schools that I've been. So Jocelyn, that's just so, so incredible. Congratulations. Your parents are here. If you want to stand up too, as well, please, please stand. Obviously, it had something to do with the success. Right here, and then we'll get your parents.
Congratulations. Wow, so impressive.
That's outstanding.
Congratulations.
Pretty.
Well, you've done what you need to do to do it.
Craig, what's she doing? Where's she going to school?
She doesn't know yet. She's a junior. Another year. I didn't figure, I didn't know she was a sophomore.
Another year to line up the scabies.
15 points higher than I got.
Let's hope, right?
Yeah. Congratulations.
That's a 1-5, not a 5. Okay, we are going to just jump a little bit ahead in our agenda because we have someone who we need to recognize, who actually has a conflict that they need to get to, and that is Amy Ervin, MacDill 4th grade teacher, Capidelta Pi Epsilon Chapter Award for Excellence in Teaching. So if you could come forward.
I said I would keep it short and sweet.
Yep.
But if you want to know what teacher means, you're looking right here at it. Amy truly not only leads from her heart with her kids in the classroom, but actually as a leader of the teachers in our building as well. I couldn't ask for someone who shows a student how to be a learner, what it means to be responsible for who they are, what they are doing, where they're going in the future. She truly is a strong part of what we do at MacDill. So congratulations, Amy.
Get a picture first. Get a picture for the website. Now you come over here.
Thank you.
What does this mean? How did you get this?
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Congratulations. Very nice.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you so much. Such an inspiration to my whole school.
Just so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Roosevelt students Jacob Hickthier and Will Gargalek will present the Mandana Bliss Award to Robert Hardina.
You can read, just read slowly. Hi.
My name is Jacob Hickthier. I am a 6th grade student at Roosevelt, and I am honored to present the Mandana Bliss Award to Mr. Robert Hardina. Mr. Hardina was my teacher last year, and I believe he deserves this award because he really inspired me to do my best, and he helped me out if I was having trouble and didn't understand. He encouraged me, he encouraged each student in each class to be their own individual and use their interests to develop their skills. One of the things Mr. Hardina is well known for is bringing some chickens into class so we can watch them while they hatch and grow. Every morning, the students would gather around the chickens' tank and watch them. It was really fun to see them develop firsthand. One of the chickens that hatched, I named Nucky because it was a bare-necked chicken. At the end of the year, Nucky looked like a teen chicken and was starting to grow feathers. Mr. Hardina also volunteers after school to lead our running club, which is open to 5th and 6th graders. He pushes all of us to do our very best and helps us to get ready for the district track meet. That's not running, it's not all running either. He has us play fun games and helps us learn to encourage each other. In conclusion, it is an honor to recognize Mr. Hardina for everything he has done for me and other students at Roosevelt.
Okay, I'm William Gargalek, and I would like to present the award to Mr. Hardina for being an outstanding teacher for me this year. Mr. Hardina is the best teacher I have had in my elementary school career. I have loved all the teachers I have had at Roosevelt School, but he is so good at being a teacher, I really want to call him Professor Hardina rather than Mr. Hardina. Mr. Hardina is the kind of teacher that makes a long, hard school day really fun. We work hard in his class, and his expectations are very high, but we do it with a spring in our step and a smile on our faces. He is very kind, respectful of us as students, and he is very, very smart and can be serious when necessary. Learning is hard work in his class, but it is always fun, something I appreciate in particular. He is always willing to share his own opinions and tell us very interesting stories about his life and experiences so we can learn from his knowledge. He also teaches us a little bit extra about what we are learning, so it is interesting and sometimes we can find useful. Mr. Hardina goes out of the way to make my day interesting, and I look forward to every day I have with him. I wish I could stay in 5th grade forever so I can have him every year.
And you can hand that to him. Thank you. Thank you so much. Step right up in the center here for a picture.
I think you should give a speech.
Jacob and Will's parents here? Hey, nice job. Let's step back a little bit. Thanks.
Well, can you look at me, kiddo?
All right. Step right up.
Hold on. Hold on.
Nice job. Nice job.
Thank you.
Teacher appreciation week. You had a great job. Your speech was great.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
You had a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Ben Franklin student Natalie Hints will present the Mandana Bliss Award to Nathan Olson.
Step right up here. How you doing? You just got over? Yep. All right.
Hello, I'm Natalie Hints, and I'm a 9th grader at Ben Franklin Junior High. So Mandana Bliss was not just a teacher. She was an adventurer and a valuable example of educational leadership in Stevens Point. I am honored to present the Mandana Bliss Award to a teacher who without a doubt deserves it, Mr. Olson. I have had the privilege of being a student in Mr. Olson's science class this year. Mr. Olson teaches in such a way that students will remember what he has taught for a long time. He teaches to make a difference. He's also reasonable and understands that we are humans, and he takes that into consideration. He also keeps students very engaged in the lessons by doing creative and interactive activities and doesn't make us feel like we're being talked at all hour. He has a great sense of humor that brightens up anyone's day, whether their day was going good or bad. His room environment is a place where students feel they can be themselves. He also has high standards and expectations for us and pushes us all to be our best. He's always there when anyone needs help or has any questions. He also helps students see that education can make a difference in our lives. Mr. Olson is very passionate about what he teaches, which makes us like and understand the topic better. There's never a dull moment in his class. We would often make strange connections and associations to certain concepts that made it easy and fun to remember. He gave us a variety of different activities, from hands-on to visual to reading, which made us better understand what we were learning in class. Even outside of the classroom, Mr. Olson is the most kind-hearted person I have ever met. And no matter what, Mr. Olson always keeps a positive attitude. These are only a few of many reasons why I believe that I nominated Mr. Olson for the Mandana Bliss Award, and I believe that he truly deserves it.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
We'll go step up to him.
All right.
Natalie's parents here? Thanks for coming.
Their family's here too?
They're here, yep, yep. Step right up.
With the Teacher Appreciation Week, it has extra significance.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
That's very well done.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're doing an awesome job.
Everything you do.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Excellent job. Thank you. Thank you.
So we have Allison Banker, Washington Elementary recipient of the Cole Fellowship Award.
Ryan, come on up.
Come on up. I told you. This is a little more impromptu than I thought it was going to be, so I will say some extremely nice things, so I
Good start.
Got to be honest, right? No. So Allison Banker is a recipient of the Cole Fellowship this year. The Cole Fellowship is the process by which our state uses to eventually nominate the Teachers of the Year in the state of Wisconsin. Ally had the opportunity to go down to Wapahon about a couple weeks ago on Sunday, and they had a very nice reception with Senator Cole, as well as other teachers and administrators and students. I guess kind of the neatest thing, this year Senator Cole decided to increase each of the awards by double, so $3,000 turned into a $6,000 award for Allison as well for the school. So that's a really nice piece of that, but I think just on a more personal level, working at Washington Elementary School is one of the best things I get to do. And, sorry, and working with Ally is an honor every single day. And we have such a hardworking staff, and seeing what Ally does every day for the students, the innovation, just the care and the effort that she puts in every single day makes Washington, this district, a wonderful place. So just congratulations to Ally and thank you. Yeah.
I can also say, being superintendent for 18 years, I don't know if I've had the privilege to work with more than three, maybe four recipients of a Cole Fellowship, so that truly is a remarkable feat, and you should be very, very proud of yourself.
Teacher appreciation week takes on more significance. Thank you so much. And congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for what you do.
So I would say, I think on behalf of the board, one of the most exciting things about going down to our school board convention every January is Senator Cole shows up, and he talks about his passion for education, and he talks about his passion for encouraging incredible schools, incredible teachers in our state. And it's just really a privilege and an honor for us to have a Cole Fellowship Award winner in our district this year. It's a big deal, so. All right, Leann Kutsa, Plover Whiting kindergarten teacher, UWSP Association for the Education of Young Children Award for Excellence in Teaching.
And would you also please introduce Mrs. Nancy Schuster? I'll share these awards.
I will. Nancy Schuster, Polver Whiting physical education teacher, Students for Health, Physical Education, and Recreation Award for Excellence in Teaching.
So I've been out of the loop for about the last four weeks after surgery, and I got an email from Sue Kadronowicz. She said we have a half hour to fill at tonight's meeting, so I want to stay involved in the district. So Leann and Nancy are both recipients tonight of special awards from different departments at the university that relate to their work, not only at our school, but also in their partnerships with the university. A number of years ago, when we needed to fill a kindergarten vacancy, someone told me Leann was available, and they said, "You're crazy if you don't hire her." There have been a couple times after I've hired her that I've kind of wondered if I wasn't crazy, but no, it was a good choice. Nancy transferred to Polver Whiting in about 1995, as I recall, and she's remained despite a number, a couple of opportunities to go elsewhere, and we're really happy that she has. The last check, three-fourths of our total storage in the building is Leann's stuff. And Nancy has a nice gem store room, but she's already, Leann's already taken over half of one of the locker rooms. They both love their own parents, and we see Leann's parents at school a lot, and we don't see Nancy's parents at school a lot, but she loves them dearly, and they make things for her. They'll make storage, they made a storage unit for your new heart monitors, and I believe they made the Wildcat Way ticket storage room. And they also taught her how to ride a Harley, so they're pretty awesome people. They're both very much loved and appreciated by their colleagues as well as their students. Over the years, Leann has served as a cooperating teacher to many a university student, and both at the elementary methods block student and student-teacher level, and Nancy has served as a cooperating teacher for many student-teachers, as well as welcoming a number of PE students to complete classroom observation hours. Leann is a very compassionate supporter for making kindergarten a developmentally appropriate learning environment for young children, and models the effect of use of technology in her class. I remember a lesson where your kids were using tablets to discover the signs of spring, and at first I thought, "Why aren't we using technology to discover the signs of spring?" But then I realized that, "How often does a kid get to see a bud bloom?" They don't, but she had a wonderful way of doing that. Nancy has represented the school district at the national level, seeking out the most current information on the most effective ways to deliver the FIAD curriculum. Most recently, with the help of our PTO, she's implemented the use of heart monitors in her FIAD program at Polver Whiting. Leann is one of our kindergarten goddesses, and if you wonder why I use that term, come spend a day in any one of our kindergarten classes. Nancy is not abashed about the fact that kindergarteners are her very favorite grade level to teach. Leann has been very instrumental in the growth and maintenance of the Wildcat Way program at PW, serving on the steering committee for several years, and has often involved, and has long been involved, in the Sunshine Committee at Polver Whiting. Nancy, as a FIAD teacher, helped get the PBIS and Wildcat Way program off the ground and is still a key supporter of the Wildcat Ways and character education for all students. Nancy knows and exemplifies our school's belief that all of our students are our students. Her work with UW students and our students has certainly made Nancy very deserving of this special UWSP award. Her focus on the many aspects of students' physical wellness and how it supports learning in all areas will continue to have a far-reaching impact on the many students who are students of her UWSP proteges. Leann knows that the skills that she teaches her kindergarten teachers, her kindergartners are foundational to the rest of their years of learning. Her support of UWSP students to understand this from the beginning of their school-based experience will leave a legacy for years to come. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to work with them daily. They're awesome people, and truly, they do represent the wonderful staff that we have at Polver Whiting, so I'm glad to honor both of you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're going to hug me?
Okay. Bye. Thank you very much.
We'll go step right up here and get a picture.
Congratulations.
That's a new significance, extra significance, coming in Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you for what you do.
I bet you don't want to shake hands.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You guys are awesome. Thank you. My daughter's a teacher. So thank you for what you're doing. Excellent job. Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Oh, my gosh. Be gentle.
You playing much these days?
No, not for a while.
Melissa Oliver, Bridges teacher, UWSP Student Council for Exceptional Children Award for Excellence in Teaching.
Good evening. My name is Erin McCoy. I'm the Special Education Supervisor here in Stevens Point. It is my pleasure to share a little bit about Melissa Oliver. Again, a recent recipient of the Student Council for Exceptional Children through the university here, specifically, again, that Excellence in Teaching. Working with Melissa as her direct supervisor at the Bridges program, I've had the enjoyment of witnessing firsthand her dedication to kids, to families, and specifically, our kids and families that maybe have encountered some of the most disrupted experiences in our school district, really respective to specific and unique emotional behavioral needs. Again, or in addition, our community partnership with Northwest Journey makes her role even more unique, and also that she serves elementary through early secondary students in her role over at Bridges. When the university reached out to me in her nomination stages, they asked if I could just provide a quick snapshot of my impression of Melissa, and here's what I shared with them. Melissa is a caring, yet professional instructional leader. She manages the needs of a significantly diverse group of students. When students are doing well, she pushes them even further. When students need more, she helps them identify and access that. She has a talent for embedding individualized instruction with opportunities for social and emotional learning that is significantly relevant to the lives of the students. In all of her routines, she promotes accountability and empowerment. Her genuine and positive rapport with students, again, many of whom represent our most significant needs, literally oozes out of her pores. Excellent choice. So again, I am pleased and honored to help celebrate the recognition of Melissa Oliver tonight.
You've only had the opportunity to visit Bridges twice, and if you have an opportunity to go there, you really should. The atmosphere when you walk in, and again, it's an alternative school that works with a very challenging population, and the atmosphere is so positive and upbeat, and when you see this young woman in action, you truly do get a feeling that those particular students' needs are being met by Melissa and her staff. So it really is a neat educational opportunity, if you ever have that opportunity.
I feel short. Cheater.
Congratulations. Very special work.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing her together.
Bridges is like a star, and you are right up
So I'm going to editorialize a little bit on this last one. What goes around comes around in life. Lynn Evans has been a neighbor of mine forever. Her daughter Rebecca was the babysitter of my kids. She's just an incredible person, but she's taken a student on for teaching for as long as I've known her. She is being honored tonight, MacDill 1st grade teacher, UWSP Student, Wisconsin Education Association Award for Excellence in Teaching. I didn't know what that really meant until my daughter Emily started her, she's in a master's program down in Madison, secondary ed, English, and ESL. And I can tell you that her And I can tell you that her CT is incredibly more important to her in her life than I am, and she has been for this last semester. I mean, she has been Emily's every single day, and the support every single day. And it's not Lynn, it's all of these teachers that we have recognized tonight, who have agreed to take on students and who really, really are what makes them move forward in education or struggle and question about education. And Lynn, in all of her years here, has raised a whole, several generations of teachers. She's been teaching forever. We, as neighbors, kept saying, "When are you going to retire?", and she'd say, "Not yet, not yet." But anyway, it's, like I said, life goes around and comes around, and you hear from someone about what they're doing, and you don't understand how important it is until it impacts you as an individual. So I'm so excited to call you up here. So Lynn Evans, Rosalynn Evans, McDill first grade teacher, UWSP Student, Wisconsin Education Association Award for Excellence in Teaching. I didn't know what that really meant until my daughter Emily started her, she's in a master's program down in Madison, secondary ed, English and ESL. And I can tell you that her CT is incredibly more important to her in her life than I am, and she has been for this last semester. I mean, she has been Emily's every single day, and the support every single day. And it's not Lynn, it's all of these teachers that we have recognized tonight, who have agreed to take on students and who really, really are what makes them move forward in education or struggle and question about education. And Lynn, in all of her years here, has raised a whole, several generations of teachers. She's been teaching forever. We, as neighbors, kept saying, "When are you going to retire?", and she'd say, "Not yet, not yet." But anyway, it's, like I said, life goes around and comes around, and you hear from someone about what they're doing, and you don't understand how important it is until it impacts you as an individual. So I'm so excited to call you up here. So Lynn Evans, Rosalynn Evans, McDill first grade teacher, UWSP Student, Wisconsin Education Association Award for Excellence in Teaching.
So what she said, Lynn, but I need to add just a tad more. Lynn is retiring this year. She truly has been our historian, our storyteller. Everything you need to know and more, and the joy that it brought to her and to our staff and to our families, Lynn will tell you and share with you. It was an honor to be able to learn about Stevens Point and our community through Lynn six years ago when I came here. Like I said with Amy, and I would say about every one of our staff members who are sitting here to recognize our two people, she truly is teacher. And teacher comes through with the kids who learn to read, the kids who understand numbers, the students who know how to say please and thank you, the kids who blossom and come back year after year after year, even after they're married and beyond. Lynn was invited to a wedding in Milwaukee because of a person she had met, not even a student, because they just got to be friends when she picks up the weekly coffee for the McDill staff. That's the kind of person we have. The one thing that you don't know about Lynn beyond this is that the award she received on Friday night in front of the UW staff has gone on and received top recognition as the outstanding cooperating teacher in the state of Wisconsin for the Student Association. And she would not tell you that because that's Lynn. But truly, when you say teacher, what an example. We're proud of her and we're going to miss her, and I'm so hoping she'll come back and help us just a tad.
Thank you.
Picture, picture.
This routine.
Sorry.
And here it starts.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Special significance happening during teacher appreciation.
You're the one who thinks it makes me feel so great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The family stuff.
I know everybody.
Yeah, and everyone knows you.
Tell us about your grandkids.
I could.
So what they didn't say, she's beautiful, she's warm, she's smart, her sense of humor is like unbelievable.
And her standing, we sat on lawn chairs in the driveway, watching kids play.
You will be missed.
But you'll be back. We'll get you back.
Thank you.
So what they didn't say is go shopping with her, because you will never get out of the store, because everybody in the store knows her. So we're moving on to item five, which is public comments, and we have four people signed up this evening. Chris Kunkel, she is speaking on agenda item on behalf of 10 as it's addressed in 13B.
Good evening. I'm Chris Kunkel. I live at 2121 Third Street in Plover. I'm a second grade teacher at Bannock Elementary. I am here tonight to talk about the proposed changes at Bannock for next school year. It has been a year with many obstacles. First, the foster grandparent program looked like it was going to conclude in December. Since this is one of those programs that not only helps students academically, but also socially and emotionally, I knew I had to help save it. Thanks to many community members, Steve Galinski from Skyward, Jim and Sharon Wysocki from Wysocki Farms, Dennis Peterson from Delta Dental, our PTO, and Julie Rakowski from Portage County, it will be in existence for three more years. Yet again, when I asked for help, I felt very little was offered, and teachers from other buildings weren't sure if they should be involved other than to write letters. Next came the addition of 20 minutes to our day. From what I have read in the journal, this time may be used for social and emotional programs. So when I heard that we were cutting our social worker time by two-thirds, I was shocked. According to the governor and experts that have been in the Stevens Point Journal, more social work time is one of their recommendations. Yet Bannock is going to be cut. Mental health issues, drug addiction, and financial difficulties do not live and go to school, only in certain areas of our district. You need to talk to any law enforcement agency or EMT to learn that they face these issues throughout our district. Just this year, my social worker has addressed all these issues, as well as suicide, friend issues, bullying, and et cetera, from my classroom. And to make a bad situation even worse, we are moving staff, which will break up teams that work. So next school year, I will not have a social worker available most days, a new LEA, and to add to it, the junior high we feed into will not have the same LEA either, that I have worked with so often, because families have students in both buildings. I'm not saying that we can't or won't deal with this, but are they, these changes in the best interest of our Bannock families? Thank you.
So I have three other people. I just want to make a statement on behalf of the board. We, as a district, for a number of years, have encountered significant struggles with respect to what is the prerogative of the Board of Education and what is the prerogative of the superintendent and administration. I want to make very clear to board members, as well as to audiences, to members who are going to speak this evening, that the specific delegation of personnel and responsibilities within our schools and within our district are fully within the prerogative of the superintendent's office. We, as a board, have no authority to take any action with respect to where particular employees are assigned or particular individuals are allocated. Those issues need to be addressed to the superintendent. In the event that the superintendent and administration determines that there needs to be a request to the board that is related to the board's prerogative, the board has the ability, as a board, to make a decision, not as individual board members in response to emails related to a particular individual. This has been going on for far too long in our district. Board members have no authority or responsibility with respect to any individual employed by our district, any student in our district, any family in our district. That is the responsibility of the superintendent and administration. We, as a board, respond to requests that come through committee and through the superintendent's office. And I think it's essential, if we, as a district, we, as a board, and we, as a community, want to move forward, that we begin to understand the importance of those responsibilities and where they lay. The only person that we have responsibility as a board, that we have any authority over whatsoever, is the superintendent. We hire the superintendent, we supervise the superintendent, and we make a determination as to whether the superintendent is doing the job that we have hired them for. We have no responsibility with respect to anyone beneath the superintendent, and it is essential, if we, as a district, are going to be able to move forward in a positive way and in a progressive, innovative way, that we honor the lines of chain of command within our district, and recognize that if there are concerns with staffing, if there are concerns within our buildings, that those concerns need to be addressed to the principal, to the directors of that particular entity, and to the superintendent. In the event those individuals believe that something needs to come forward to the board for action, that is the only time that we, as a board, in total, in our business meeting and in our action, can make a decision. So people are more than welcome to make comment. I am not discouraging comment, but what I'm saying is, if comment is related to the initial comment, it is not a board matter until it comes before the board. It is a matter that needs to be addressed to building, to the director of student services, and to the superintendent. And we, as individual board members, have literally no authority. We have a policy that specifically states that as individuals, we have no ability to direct any action of any individual within this school district. And if we, as board members individually, attempt to step outside of that, or attempt to provide information on behalf of the district, we have stepped outside of our roles, our legal responsibilities and abilities, and we leave ourselves open for individual issues. So with that said, I will call in the next person, but I truly believe, if we want to move forward as a district, we have got to begin to honor the difference between what the board's job and roles responsibilities are, and what the superintendent's roles and responsibilities are, and we need to honor and respect that chain of command. It's essential for any organization to be successful. Deb Neff, on behalf of 10 as it is addressed 13B.
My name is Deb Neff. I live at 2321 Meadow Lane in Plover, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Bannock School. I'm reading this on behalf of many of us at Bannock School. Thank you for taking the time to hear our collective thoughts and the concern for many members of the Bannock staff. Several staff members wish to be here, but had other responsibilities tonight and were unable to attend. I won't interject. Recently, we were informed that social worker time would be cut in half from Bannock School for the 2017-18 school year. We are requesting that this decision be reconsidered. Prior to being notified of this change, many Bannock staff had completed the school climate survey. Results of that survey indicated supporting our students, specifically through the student services, of social worker and school psychologist supports was a priority. In fact, 71% of responders indicated increased time to support students with emotional, with social-emotional well-being as an area of need. Again, this was before we knew about the potential change to the social worker time at Bannock. As you may be aware, anxiety, depression, and life stressors knows no economic status. However, the only reported reason for this change is the overall socioeconomic status, SES, of the families in our attendance areas. While we respectfully acknowledge that low SES can impact a family's well-being, so can stressors negatively impact students from other SES situations. We know that stressors for any adolescents can become devastating. We are concerned that because the Bannock staff have not complained nor reached out for additional resources beyond ourselves, gives the impression that our students are not needy, when in fact, they are as needy as any other students in the Stevens Point area community. We believe that social workers possess an expertise other certified staff do not have. The staff relies on the knowledge base that other social worker brings, as well as unique perspective that a social worker can have. Our students rely on this relationship with understanding as well. Social workers can have access and information to resources that are not known readily to us, have training that is more specialized, and can consider the needs of the student only, as compared to considering the needs of the student within a larger class that general education teachers are more challenged to do. To assume not verbalizing concerns for students outside our building or not reaching out for additional resources means they do not need the support is simply not true. The Bannock staff already does quite a lot with less reading support, no title support, and continues to work diligently for the best of our students. We respectfully request that you encourage the student service office to engage in a larger group conversations about how to best meet the needs of all the students. We request that collaborative discussion and conversations be held with wider groups, including principals, social workers, and school psychologists, before implementing this cut at Bannock. Perhaps a group such as this could focus their thinking with the end in mind and envision that what we need to achieve in all buildings across our whole community, and to ensure that social worker programming is designed in such a way as to maximize the services for all. Perhaps a paradigm shift required, rather than taking support away from some locations, it would be determined when hard conversations are had, and perhaps the whole will become greater than its parts when a creative collective is assembled. Thank you for your time, and this is from the members of Bannock Elementary School.
Thank you. Julie Lovick, on behalf of 10 as it addresses 13B.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I understand what you said, Ms. Earl, but I am also going to state that I am a taxpayer who voted for members of the school board, and feel that it is also my responsibility and duty to and right to come here and share my concerns that I have learned that will be affecting my students, students in my classroom, as well as my very own children who attend the school. I'm a member of the Bannock's PBIS committee and was made aware of staffing for next year as we were planning for the 2017-18 school year. I learned that the number of days a school social worker has been assigned to Bannock to service students and their families has been reduced from three out of a six-day rotation to one out of six days for the 2017-18 school year. That is a reduction of 66%. This amounts to meeting with children three days each month. While it doesn't seem alarming to some members of administration outside of our school, I find that this is a major disservice to a very important population of our community. According to the social work, School Social Work Association of America and Wisconsin's DPI website, the recommended ratio of social workers to students in K through six should be 1 to 250 students. We currently don't subscribe to that recommendation at one-half to 400 during the 2016-17 school year. I understand that other schools need more services and that time taken from our students has been allocated to other elementary schools. I'm not trying to state that there isn't a strong need in other schools, as I know social-emotional issues are very prevalent throughout our community. Staffing should be increased if needed. We were told that this decision was based on the fact that our school has the least amount of free and reduced lunch students. Therefore, our need for social work services isn't as great. Please keep in mind that this is based solely on those who choose to complete, turn in, and qualify for free and reduced lunch. Not all those who are of need choose to apply. Based on this rationale, one would believe that only children of poverty benefit from social work services. As stated in the draft of the district's beliefs and mission statement to be addressed tonight, it clearly states that we believe the district is responsible for providing equitable access to resources and learning opportunities. If one would take the time to read the roles of a social worker on Wisconsin's DPI website, one would find 41 roles that address 15 top issues and areas of responsibility, as well as 15 professional strategies and programs that are employed by social workers. I find it hard to believe that a halftime position for 400 students can address all that is needed, let alone a 1/6 position as prescribed for the 2017-18 school year. The curriculum delivered by our school social worker includes career counseling, behavioral management, self-regulation, problem-solving, and self-awareness, to name a few. All students, whether they are impoverished, middle-class, or affluent, benefit from learning and applying this curriculum to their daily lives. While the social worker instructs students as stated previously, she also meets in small groups and individually as needed. I have had both boys and girls, impoverished, well-off, and middle-class students, and gifted, average, and struggling students work with Mrs. Geske over my four years at Bannock Elementary. Many of their needs have been the same regardless of their gender, socioeconomic background, or cognitive abilities. Anxiety, depression, divorce, behavioral issues, learning disabilities, anger management, death, chronic illness, and abuse are not selective of class. They are issues that any child can experience. The decision to reduce our staffing based on free and reduced lunch counts leads me to believe that the school district believes that only an impoverished population needs social work services to address issues such as these. This is inaccurate. Rather than reducing the role of the school social worker at Bannock, I feel there is a stronger need to meet the DPI recommendation of 1 to 250 students, as well as increase the staffing needed in all schools to fulfill the needs of the social and emotional well-being of our student population. Students who don't feel safe and are struggling emotionally are not able to reach their full potential in the educational setting. We should be doing what we can to fulfill our district's mission: prepare each student to be successful. While I'm an educator at Bannock Elementary, I am also a parent of children who have and currently attend the school. I, just like the parents of children who attend other, the other eight schools, pay property taxes to support the education and social well-being of children who attend Bannock. The reduction in staff is a message to me, as a parent, that my child doesn't need nor deserves the curriculum presented at the other schools to ensure that he is physically and mentally ready to learn. It shows that the district doesn't feel he deserves career preparation, lessons about social interaction, or counseling and guidance that is provided to the other school populations. I don't qualify for free and reduced lunch. I have children who are bright and curious learners. My children come from a two-parent home, that allows them to participate in activities they love and enjoy, but I am still a parent of a child who is being treated for depression. I could tell you what it is like to watch your child lay in bed at noon on a warm summer day and not want to play with friends. I could tell you what it is like when your child shares that he doesn't think he's good enough, or that nothing ever seems right. You wouldn't know, you wouldn't need to know his socioeconomic background to know that this is hard for a parent to go through, let alone even harder for that child to experience every day. I would venture a guess that he and I feel just as sad as someone from another school or socioeconomic background. Losing the counseling that can be done at our school because there won't be enough allotted time to complete all tasks a social worker needs to attend to could mean a child like mine may not learn coping strategies to help him persevere. In conclusion, I am asking you to prioritize the social and emotional needs of all students in the Stevens Points Public Schools. Please consider the rights and needs of all children regardless of gender, socioeconomic background, or cognitive ability. We have a duty to prepare all children in our community to be productive members of our society. This includes developing their social skills, emotional well-being, and cognitive abilities. Thank you.
I will again note that my comments indicated that it is essential that comments and concerns related to matters of staffing first are allowed the opportunity at the director of student services and at the superintendent level prior to board level. The board meetings are business meetings of the board related to business matters before the board. This matter is not on our agenda. We are not, as a board, making any determination this evening with respect to social work services at Bannock or at any other school in our district. I just want to make that very clear to the members who are attending this evening, as well as to the public. Item four is TJ Farrell-Kozak, on behalf of 10, as it addresses 13B.
Okay, Mag, well, I appreciate your stance as it pertains to the board and its role. I respectfully would advocate that this board still needs to understand that the employees are looking for a place for their voice. So we are here to give our voice and the only avenue that we have at this point in time because it has stopped at our administration level. So we are following what we know as a staff to let everyone understand where we are coming from. So we appreciate that you're listening to us and that you're taking the time to do that this evening. If you would like to have that further conversation with us, we welcome it. If Cabinet wants to have that further conversation with us, please bring it to us. But we are here on behalf of our children and our families. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight in regards to item, agenda items number 10 and 13B. The district states, one, our mission, which is on the agenda tonight: prepare each student to be successful. Two, our vision: the leading innovative school district empowering lifelong learners to strengthen our communities. I can honestly say that can be said for eight of the nine elementary schools. Unfortunately, I feel Bannock Elementary learners will not be given the same resources and programming as the other eight elementary schools starting next fall if the current proposal for student services staffing is implemented. I've passed out a chart with projected numbers for enrollment for the 2017-18 school year, along with the percentage of social worker time allocated for each of the nine elementary schools that was shared by my building administrator, along with my school PBIS team. Please notice an inequity in those percentages. While I understand how Title I reading money is directly tied to socioeconomic status and percentage of free and reduced lunches, social work and access to it is not. Apparently, a study was done by student services that feels Bannock students do not need the same services as the rest of the other eight elementary buildings based upon their parents' incomes. I'm pretty sure my fellow staff members and my parents in attendance would feel differently. While we're not a Title I school, you'll notice that two other elementary schools are not either, yet surprisingly, their percentage will remain at 50%, while ours is slashed to a mere 20%. That means the children at Bannock will have services available to them, their families, and our staff only one out of every six days. Yes, that's right, one out of every six. Other schools will get three out of every six, or four, or even more. Why, you ask yourself? Rationale given to us as staff was because our families don't have a high enough percentage of students who reduce, sorry, receive free and reduced lunch. I passed out the district's job description for social workers. You can see how extensive and intense the job description is. Now take a moment and ask yourself, what can one individual do to give fair and equitable services to 400 students, their families, and the staff that work with them in one day? Truthful answer: not much. The current proposal, in my opinion, is setting us up to fail. I also provided you with two other documents. One is from the School Social Work Association of America, and the other is from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Both accredited sources recommend that the ratio of a one master-certified social worker for every 250 or fewer students. As you can see from the chart, our district doesn't meet that requirement in seven out of our nine elementary schools. Data proves that low socioeconomic status does not lead to higher needs. In fact, the research and data show a direct correlation between high suicide rates and instances of unexpected violent outbursts within households with average to above-average incomes. Please do not misunderstand me. I'm not saying it doesn't happen in low socioeconomic areas. I'm stating that research shows the rise within the average to above-average income households. Those are the households relative to the ones who have students who attend Bannock. Currently, the students in my fifth-grade classroom have about 10 lessons taught to them by the school social worker. The lessons focus on bullying, acceptance of staff, handling the zones of regulation, and AODA issues. By removing our social worker, all 400 of our students won't have access to or receive the lessons that were provided to students at all of the other eight elementary schools. To me, that's not fair, and it doesn't, as our mission statement says, "Prepare each student to be successful." Knowing that, I ask, why are we cutting services? Just why our school and not other schools in the district who don't qualify for Title I? Why would the district take its highest-performing school under the state report card and dismantle its programs and services? If the model currently being used at Bannock is desired by other schools, then why not work collaboratively with them? If other schools are expressing a need for additional social work services, as a taxpayer, I say, give them those services. Then the district would be supporting them and adding staff to get us closer to those minimal recommended amounts, not taking from one that's succeeding to give to others that aren't or need our help. If we truly want to empower our students to be lifelong learners that will strengthen our communities, as your mission statement you're discussing tonight says, then we need to provide them with the opportunities and skills necessary by making the learning environments at programs fair and equitable to all of our students. Thank you.
What I will again note is that, as board members, all of us today received a series of emails related to this matter. The superintendent was not included on those emails. The director of student services wasn't included on those emails. The principal of the building that we're discussing was not included on those emails. Prior to communication with the board, it is essential that there is communication with the appropriate administrators because the allocation of personnel within buildings is a responsibility of the superintendent. I'm not trying to be mean. I'm not saying that I am not interested in hearing what people are saying. What I'm telling you is, it's the superintendent's job to make those decisions, and it's essential that communication occurs through the appropriate administrative channels prior to coming to the board, because there is nothing the board can do about this unless the administration and superintendent bring forward a proposal to us for our consideration and for our decision. We, as a district, will, I truly believe, be much better off if people begin to understand the importance of communication and appropriate levels of communication within the decision-making process of our school district and of our school board. I thank everyone for the comments this evening. I strongly encourage you to ensure that you're working through the levels of command: the principal, the director of student services, the superintendent's office, and requesting and explaining the concerns that you have. Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening who did not sign up who would like to speak? Moving on to item six, presentations. Yes?
I don't know if I have to make a motion for this. Is it okay if I go first? I have to be at work at 8:00.
Oh, you bet. Okay, we'll jump to, we'll jump to student representative report, Quinn.
Okay. So it is Teacher Appreciation Week, as we all know, so I just wanted to give a little shout-out to all the SPAS teachers for all the work they do. We appreciate it. AP testing started last week Monday and runs through this week Friday. Over 300 SPAS students are taking over 500 AP exams on which they can earn advanced college credit. Last Monday, May 1st, was Academic Awards Night at SPAS. Students received recognition for having a cumulative GPA of 3.8 or higher, and we also recognized other academic achievements. Jocelyn was already here to be recognized for her ACT, but I just wanted to give her another shout-out because it's actually her birthday today, and she came to the school board meeting. And on top of that, she turned 15 today. So she was 14 when she earned her 36. It's crazy.
Wow.
And thank you to Ms. O'Donnell for coming and taking pictures of the award recipients. Tonight is Athletic Awards Night at SPAS, run by Mr. Blair. This past weekend, over 80 students competed in the State Music Solo and Ensemble Festival at UWSP. Thursday night this week is the Final Orchestra Concert at 7:30 in the auditorium. The final concert, blah, the Final Choir Concert will be Thursday and, as well, and the band concert will be Wednesday, May 24th. Both are at 7:30. Summer school registration is open and accepting registrations. It starts on June 19th. Our FFA is sponsoring Bring Your Tractor to School Day on Friday, May 19th. Spring sports are going strong, although the weather has been the toughest opponent this year. Regional competition will begin at the end of this month. The final class day for seniors is Thursday, May 25th, and ends with the traditional senior countdown where we all throw our papers and make a huge mess and clean it up. Graduation rehearsal will be Friday, May 26th, at 8:00 a.m. in the fieldhouse. The graduation ceremony is on Sunday, the 28th, at 1:00 p.m. in the fieldhouse, and project graduation will follow that night from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. for the rest of the students that have to go another week after I'm done. School will end June 6th, or June 7th, and finals will be the 6th and the 7th. And that's it for me. I just wanted to also say thank you, everyone, for giving me the chance to be here this year. I really enjoyed my time on the board.
Did a great job.
Great job and showtime. That was awesome.
I think we should have a walk-around, don't you?
I kind of have to go to work.
Yeah, we don't want to get to see you. Thank you.
All right, moving back to A, Wisconsin Association of School Boards Legislative Update.
Madam President, a number of things as the legislative year really starts to spin up for us. A few things on our radar that we're looking at. Number one is a slate of school referendum bills that are in the state senate and assembly. And some of those bills include limitations on operating referenda and debt issuance when they may be called. There is a bill on Fund 46 Partial Match. There is one concerning creating general aid penalty for exceeding revenue limits by referendum. There is one requiring referenda to be scheduled on general election dates, as well as the elimination of referenda to exceed the revenue limits on a recurring basis, as well as a disclosure of debt issuance referendum costs. And all of those are in committee. WASB is monitoring those and currently doesn't support any of them in their current form, but will report back as any changes happen or they get reported out of committee. A few other things of note on the national front. President Trump has signed an executive order on April 26th directing the U.S. Secretary of Education to conduct a study to, quote, "determine where the federal government has unlawfully overstepped on state and local control with regard to K through 12 schools." It'll be interesting to see what the secretary reports out from that and then what action the federal government may take. DPI has released her draft for public review of the Wisconsin Consolidated Plan for the ESSA, describing how the state will implement the Every Student Succeeds Act, and the public comment period for that goes through June 30th. Recently, a bill was introduced that aims to call attention to the growing impact of the Wisconsin voucher program on school property taxes. So we'll be taking a look at AB 267 and how that comes out. The Wisconsin Voucher Taxpayer Transparency Bill has been authored and is now in committee, which requires school districts to provide certain information regarding the impact of property taxes, the reduction in state aid, and other information to taxpayers. USDA has relaxed some of the school meal nutritional rules, allowing schools more flexibility in what it chooses for its students to consume. The U.S. House has passed a repeal of the Affordable Care Act, which in its current form provides for deep cuts to Medicaid, which would impact special education. So we're watching that as it moves into the senate. And the president has signed a spending bill that which funds the federal government through September 30th, actually provides about a billion-dollar increase compared to 2016 for funding levels for Title I and Title IV, budget cuts for Title II, and about a 1% increase for many other programs that are related to education. So it will, it will be interesting to see how that shakes out and how that is passed down to the states and the ability of the state of Wisconsin to be able to transfer those savings onto us. So we'll be keeping an eye out for that. And as always, I encourage my colleagues to keep an eye out on the WASB website for the latest on educational legislation.
Anybody else? The Title II potential cuts are potentially significant, so that's something that we're keeping an eye on. The other one I know that the district is very focused on right now is the energy exemption, allowing, exceeding the cap on revenue, and I know staff has taken a look at that right now because we do have a number of our capital improvement projects that could potentially qualify under that exemption, and the state is looking at eliminating that. So staff is taking a close look at that right now to see, timing-wise, what our opportunities might be. So, thank you. Item C, Communication Report, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and obviously, as we saw tonight, we have a lot to be. It is teacher appreciation week, and obviously, as we saw tonight, we have a lot to be appreciative of, not just staff who are here, but all staff, right, for what they do every day to ensure that students are successful. Taking a look at your communications dashboard, I, the really only thing I want to highlight on there is you'll see those LinkedIn numbers aren't going up as quickly as I would like them to. We are continuing to try to engage in that area. I continue to work with HR, incorporating that You Belong in Point campaign that we put together for recruitment specifically. So we'll continue to monitor and continue to try to get folks to engage in that space. Website views are stable. This summer, we'll be doing a review, really taking a look at, okay, we, you know, we looked at it last summer, we rebuilt it, we think that we got it right, but we'll be able to kind of do that deeper dig into the data and make sure that we did get it right and make adjustments where we didn't. So looking forward to that. The on-your-radar, you'll notice, is very busy. Schools are always busy, but May is certainly, we see those events just really increase. So it's by no means a comprehensive list. I wanted to just grab some of those highlights for you, so you had them. Please feel free, I would encourage you to attend them if you're able to. Really, really good stuff there. I will note, the PJ Jacobs Choir Concert did not make the list. They were originally supposed to perform tonight but needed to be moved due to the athletic awards event taking place at SPAS. They're probably close to being done now, but they are performing tomorrow. So if you're in the mood for a concert, PJ Jacobs will be up at SPAS tomorrow. The academic awards did take place last Monday night at SPAS. There are photos and a list of students who received that award, so certainly I encourage you to take a look at that. PODS will be hosting a spring fundraiser, Plates for PODS. The meal is presented by Stack Farms or Stack House Farms. I apologize to them that I cannot remember that right now. And will feature locally sourced food, so kind of a unique spin on that fundraiser, kind of that step up from that spaghetti dinner. Tickets can be purchased here at Bliss or at PODS or reserved online, and then we'll send them to you through the mail. And they're only selling 75 tickets, so if you're interested, I would encourage you to get yours early. Minimum donation of $40 a plate. Unfortunately, you will not be able to attend because it is the evening of the retirement dinner on the 23rd, but I do encourage others who are interested to attend. I want to congratulate MacDill Elementary School on being named a Green and Healthy Sapling School. They kind of went to the next level for their effort and work there. Mrs. Vaughn put together a super cute video of just kind of what they've done throughout the year. You can find that online or on Facebook or on YouTube. It's everywhere if you want to take a look at that. Just a reminder, Tiger Trek registration is still open. If you are a district employee, the Working on Wellness Program will reimburse a portion of your registration fee if you'd like to participate. Summer school registration does close this Friday, so registration is still open. That window is shrinking, so certainly we encourage folks that are interested in participating to do that. They can register online at Skyward Family through Family Access. That is also open to students who aren't our students but live in the district, or if you live out, and that registration is available online. I do just want to note, too, if folks did register for transportation, we sent to communication, we think that we may have had a system error in the beginning of summer school registration, so we may not have accurately captured folks' transportation information. So individuals who, families who are registered have been notified. We just want them to go in there and make sure that, yep, we have it and, yep, it's accurate, so that we have a very smooth transportation, so they can do their routing accurately. If families have questions on that, they are more than welcome to call Educational Services. And just a reminder that breakfast and lunch is free to all district student residents 18 and under throughout the summer school program. So they will provide breakfast and lunch, obviously, to students who are there, but you don't need to be a student to participate. So we do encourage folks to please, if that is something they would like to take advantage of, highly encouraged at summer school sites. So not at every school, but only the schools where summer school is. Beyond that, I do just want to note, the school perceptions, staff and parent surveys have closed, those have been completed. We have received back the staff surveys, so administrators have been able to take a look at that data. I would expect us to have those parent, that parent piece back fairly quickly as well. We did throw a planning question in there, in there to try to rank, I think there were like 10 options, and then folks could comment what they thought was important and where they wanted the board and the district to really focus. So that information will be available for strategic planning, which meets.
Next week. Thursday, Friday, next week.
Next week. Okay. And then I will present those results to the board in June. And then my last comment, and then I will, I promise to get off of here. The Education Enrichment Fund did make their determinations today on funding for the 17-18 school year. I'm not going to announce it today, just in case folks have missed that communication of, of what was awarded and what wasn't. It certainly was not an easy decision for the group. They had about $9,900 to gift this year, and I do just want to remind people that they can continue to contribute to that fund. As a group, they haven't really done a significant push for fundraising, but the more money that is there in that fund, the more that they can grant. And there are just really fantastic entries every year, and it would obviously be their wish to be able to fulfill as many of those as possible. So I would certainly encourage people to continue to contribute to that fund. It's housed at the Community Foundation of Central Wisconsin. You can donate there online, and if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Sarah, can I just ask a question? That, that Community Foundation Fund, how is that put out to the community so that they're aware that they can contribute to that? How do we?
I don't think that, that we.
Do we do anything with that?
I haven't. So the fund has been around for.
I know.
A long time, and what I gather from history is that there was a big push in this community, a well-supported effort to raise the amount that is currently there. And then obviously, they gift, you know, they go through the funding formula.
Right.
I don't think that we have pushed for that, and it's on my list of things to look at over summer as we're planning for next year. I think there's, there's some opportunity there for us to do a better job of talking about that, and not only from a, kind of that donation fundraising piece, but also here.
Both sides.
Result of that, you know? So we talk a lot about who gets the awards, but we haven't done a good job, in my opinion, of talking about what those outcomes are and why we should continue to fund that.
I think it's really important to let the community know, because initially, when that started, I was on the board when that started, and board members contributed, I know, and, and some matched each other to start that off, to make that, but I, but it really, even, you know, people who came forward to, didn't come forward to say, hey, we've got this money, and, and it just wasn't publicized that well. I'd like to see that.
And I think it's just the life cycle, right? So you have something that's getting a lot of attention and, you know, folks are really, it's, it's present, and I think because it was so well-funded and because it's so well-done every year, that, you know, it's, it's just one of those things, it's just time to give it attention again.
Right. The other thing I would just ask, that I don't know how much social media is used in putting that summer school registration date, that last date, out there, but I think it's really important, because the minute you put something out that I know parents are talking about, I hit Facebook right away to share that.
Appreciate that.
Because everybody isn't looking at our school website.
Yeah, so reminders went out on Saturday via email to all families, whether or not they've registered. I didn't pull them out, I just reminded everybody.
But even the part.
And then it went through our social on Saturday.
Even the part about the, the free breakfast and lunch.
Yep.
I think that's really important, that people understand that they, if they've got kids out there, they can come and have that.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So I was involved in the Community Foundation when that fund was first set up. Kathy Davies was incredibly instrumental, and, and they had a goal. I mean, they had a fundraising goal, and they went out and met with businesses in the community, and they very quickly made that goal, and I think that was really it.
This is able to support some things in classrooms that we can't as a district.
Right. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Item D, superintendent's report.
I would also like to recognize our great staff and all the good things that they do for our kids each and every day. And speaking of staff, you can see up here the number of retirements that we have. We have 24 retirements from across the board, representing bus drivers, EA, food service members. We have one person from this building, Bliss. We have clerical, custodian, maintenance, and we have teachers that will be recognizing May 23rd at our retirement dinner. I'd like to thank this group. Tonight, we will have a formal gathering and, and thanking of these staff members on the 23rd. Encourage board members to attend that. You can see that of all of these staff members, we have 549 years of experience, ranging from just a couple of years all the way up to, I believe, 33 years. So there's an awful lot of experience that we're going to be losing in the school district, and I'm going to parlay into that just a little bit. We have a number of staff members that obviously will be retiring, and we have approximately 10 openings for certified and, excuse me, 14, and about another 10 for, for support staff. And we're in the process of putting together interview committees and teams as we go through applications. We are in a, in extreme labor crisis right now in, in the state of Wisconsin, as well as the country. You know, we've been hearing this for quite some time, and, and the year 2020 has always been what I've heard, that in 2020, we're going to have a labor crisis. You know, we're not waiting till 2020. We are struggling right now, and this is across the board. I had our CISA meeting on, on, on Friday, and that was a topic of conversation, how challenging it is to, to hire staff today, all staff, in every single position that we have. So we will continue to do our very best at replacing all of our staff that, that leave, whether they be new positions or staff that just leave in general, but certainly the, the group that we'll be recognizing and thanking on, on May 23rd. Here's a list of, you probably can't read that very well, but this is a list that Sarah probably went over. This is a list of opportunities for you as board members to attend. You can see May is a very, very busy month, beginning with this week as recognition for our, our staff and, and all of the concerts that we'll have throughout the course of the next month. Unfortunately, Plates for PODS and the retirement dinner are on the same evening. It's difficult when you hit May to have specific nights without any type of conflicts. We've also had a very wet spring, and we've had a number of cancellations for athletic events, and that likely is going to play, come into play as it relates to conflicts for board members. So appreciate any involvement that you guys can get in terms of get to over the course of the next month. Any questions for me?
I do want to say thank you to staff. They've been very progressive and proactive about announcing retirement and announcing decisions with respect to the district, which is incredibly helpful for us as we move forward and attempt to staff for next year. The sooner that we know that we have vacancies, the, or proactive we can be about getting out there and filling those vacancies. So thank you very much to staff for, for helping us out with respect to that. Consent agenda, seven. Minutes of April 10th, 2017, regular board meeting. The minutes of April 24th, 2017, special board meeting. Approval of monthly bills and recommendations for employment.
Move for approval is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's claw the roll because we have the bills.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Passes.
Item eight, business services. Business Services Committee Chair Report, Amy Daly.
All right, so as usual, I'll roll through as we roll through our agenda items. We did have information presented to us from Dr. Owens regarding the bills that are potentially coming our way, specifically with referendums. But our big piece of information we had was the approval of property and casualty insurance bid. And the reason it was a big topic of discussion is that we are not recommending to the board the lowest bid. We had three people put in their bids. The one was removed pretty much immediately because they didn't tell us how much the insurance would cost. They gave us price indicators, which you can't really work with that. And then the lowest bid of the remaining two had 15 items where they didn't provide us a coverage amount that was listed as unknown or not available at that time. So in our good faith, we could not recommend taking an insurance policy that, we didn't really know what all the coverage would be, as where the recommendation with M3 and EMC is, the insurance we've had for the past years, we've never had an issue with the claim, we've never had issues with them. The other lower bid, we do have letters that were received from other districts where they did have issues. So I would move to approve the M3 EMC as a 2017-18 property and casualty insurance agent provider as documented in the above bid. We actually do have two motion items.
Right, and I'll second your motion, Amy.
Okay, so I have a motion, Amy, seconded by Chris. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, and the second one?
Our second one is regarding cyber liability. And just this past week, I'm sure you've seen the importance of having that extra internet protection coverage should something happen with our securities. So this second motion is to approve R and R Allied World as the 2017-18 cyber liability insurance agent provider as documented in Exhibit 4 of the bid. That was my motion also.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Amy, seconded by Chris. Any discussion on the second motion?
And all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end for me.
Yeah, that was quick. Moving into nine, Educational Services Committee Chair Report, Trish Baker.
Well, two things. We didn't have a meeting, and number two, Barb Portson is now the chair of Educational Services.
That's correct.
I screwed up.
You did.
It's okay.
Okay, so Barb, do you want to call item B for us?
No, I.
No.
Since we didn't have a meeting.
Yep.
I will move to recommend approval of written parent requests to exercise their choice to opt out their student from the state testing program, but Barb, you can second it.
Second.
This is an annual item that we're required to do.
So any discussion or questions on it? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that, Barb. I didn't catch it. Trish, thanks.
I did.
Maybe I could say that I was out of town two weeks ago.
We were testing.
Yeah, really.
Moving on to item 12, Policy and Legislation Committee Chair Report, Dan.
Policy and Leg did meet, and after talking about some of the upcoming legislative items, the mainstay of the meeting was working on the Zero Series of policies. We completed the review of the second half as planned, and we now have a, about a dozen or so policies that we need to go over in detail, which will be reserved for the next committee meeting. Just to let the board know, our, our tentative schedule for moving forward on these is the, once a section of policies are completed, that next board meeting, it is our intent to provide a board a clean copy of those policies as recommended. That'll give the board a month to look at them, and at the following board meeting, we would ask for approval of those policies that have been worked on. So you should expect to see at the next board meeting, a copy of the Zero Series, the, the board's policies, formerly known as the 100 Series, and we will then have a month to do some homework and come back at the next meeting to approve those. And that'll be the, the same pattern as we move forward. Our intent is to allow the board to weigh in on each one of those sections, tentatively approving them, pending approval of the entire slate of policy revisions, because if you only take some of the policies and approve those, that throws everything out of sync because they are, they are intertwined. So what we would do is ask for tentative approval, and then, once the last series has been reviewed and approved, we would then be asking the board to move forward and approve the entire slate as presented or as amended by the board. So it may take a little bit of time, but we're making good progress. And I may note, Dan's doing a great job facilitating what is a very difficult task.
Except for he has a wonderful committee that really.
Absolutely, and it's the, it is the committee that makes my job easy, so thank you to all the wonks on my committee.
You do do a wonderful job, Dan.
Good. All right, we are moving on to item 13, general. A is board vacancy. We currently have a vacancy on the board. We are looking for a motion from the board. I guess what we've discussed, what typically happens in this situation is. I guess what we've discussed, what typically happens in this situation, is we, as a board, make the decision, yes, we want to fill it. We would tell Sue to go ahead and advertise for the position. There's a minimum of two-week requirement for notice. We have received a number of calls already of people expressing interest. So, I think we will definitely have some great candidates for the position. The last time we did this, we interviewed the candidates as a slate. I mean, we had everyone up together, and we just asked them all the same questions. That was a suggestion of Superintendent Erlock, and I thought went incredibly well. We have the option, because the June board meeting tends to be one of our lighter meetings, to be able to go ahead and do that at that June board meeting. If we want to, the other option would be, if board members felt that we wanted it to be a separate meeting, we could move it into the committee meeting beforehand and look to have it on maybe that Wednesday night, where the focus of that special meeting would be the interview and approval of a board member. So, I guess we're trying to get input from people as to what you'd like. If we look to do the June meeting, we might look to start the meeting at 6:00 versus 6:30.
I will make a motion to fill the vacant position on the board per Policy 133.
And do I have a second? Okay, discussion. Amy?
So, we received in our, at our place tonight, the list of like four questions. Is it possible for us to include those questions with the application? So, then, when they send that back, we already have a feel of that part of it for the person? And then, once we sit down, kind of move the process along, considering we're probably going to have a few applicants this time?
You mean, you'd look for a written response from?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have to be essay, but...
And the main reason we put those in there was if board members had additional questions that they thought might be appropriate, you could provide them. But do people like the idea of asking for a paragraph or two response from everybody prior to the board meeting? Or do you prefer to have it as part of the meeting?
What's on the application? There's like four questions.
Yes, there are a few questions on the application.
There are a couple of questions on the application, along with some personal information that we'll send out to the board. These are the questions that we had that particular evening.
Right.
Yeah.
We certainly can include the questions ahead of time, so they're more prepared. But the application itself does have some basic questions on it.
I think it's got education philosophy kind of background. Why do you think you'd be the best for the position?
I would also say that I would like it to be at the June meeting, considering we're going to be coming out of a really busy May, and then to start June off with another extra meeting. I'd like it to just be rolled into that one meeting, personally.
Are people okay with that? Are people okay if we started at 6:00 that night?
Is that early enough? Is that early enough?
Well, we could do, we could just start the board meeting as soon as we're done.
Yeah. And again, once we get applications in, you know, we may have to make an adjustment. If we have a ton of them, we may have to come back, circle around.
I think we had 6:00 last time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the concept that would be that we'd be looking to do it at the June meeting, a tentative start of 6:00 P.M. Sue will get the information out tomorrow, and we'll get the clock rolling in terms of people being aware that there's an opening and that they can apply.
Do you want these questions? Do you want different questions?
I like the questions.
I think they're fine.
I like these questions.
Yeah.
But I guess the question is, do we want written responses, or do we want to ask the folks? Of course, this is now kind of a public document, so...
Yeah.
It kind of defeats the purpose.
You know what? There are a couple of questions on the application. And when we get the applications, you'll receive all of that material. Very good point. This is now a public document. We'll share that, these with the candidates ahead of time. And that night, I believe, I simply did a round robin, starting with one candidate, and then have the second candidate would have the first shot at answering the question.
I have to say, I like the, I like hearing what they had to say, and the, kind of, on their, see how well they think on their toes, I guess.
Yeah, I agree. I just didn't know, I didn't want, just like, we're going to have 10 people come in, and all we know is their name and
Right.
...their address and where they work. That doesn't really help to get to know them right away. But I'm fine with that.
Okay, and we'll note...
And we're looking at the June...
The June meeting, June board meeting, yeah. I'll note, we do have a board policy that permits board members, if you believe that there's someone out there that you think would be incredible for the board, to talk to them about it. So, again, anyone in our school district, anyone on our board, anyone in our community, if you think that there's someone out there that, who would be a help for us, especially as we move forward with strategic planning, with the financial issues we have dealing moving forward, with our capital improvement study that's going to be come forward, we're going to have a lot of very important decisions for now and for later for this district. So, we encourage people to consider throwing your hat in the ring for this seat. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is District Mission, Vision, and Belief Statements. This is in front of us tonight, because the second part of the strategic planning is happening next week. And the work that they will be doing will be based on the mission, vision, and belief statements that we, as a board, approve. Board members received copies of what the committee brought forward for our consideration. The district mission remains the same. The recommendation is to keep with the current mission statement. The vision statement is there in front of you, as well as the belief statements. And so, I guess I'd put it out to the board. It'd be nice to get a motion on the floor, and then we can talk about it.
What do you need for a motion?
Why don't we do them one at a time?
What do we need for a motion?
To approve the district mission, to approve the district vision as presented.
Approve the district mission as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That would be to prepare each student to be successful.
Just a comment. Craig, you sent around some information about a meeting where a student talked about that, our mission. And I thought that was extremely powerful, how that affected him and what he thought about that. And I don't know...
There were a lot of comments of that evening, I can, myself, knowing that we need to look at a new strategic plan. It's time to do that. When I interviewed for this job a year ago and looked at our mission statement, I liked it then. And I knew going into a strategic planning exercise, that's the first thing you look at.
Right.
And I had, I heard a couple of staff members say, "Do we really have to change this?" And we spent hours on this, and at the end, we concluded, "Why change it? We like it."
Yeah.
And it's meaningful, and it's simple.
So, years and years ago, there was a discussion about changing it. And there were a lot of board members and a lot of discussions about what it could be, what it should be. And bottom line, because we have so many different types of learning experience for students, and each of our students has such an individual life, that in the end, everyone said, "You know what? This fits everyone. It fits their needs. Whatever we plug in is criteria. We just want them all to be successful." And that's how it ended, that, yeah, we could change it and make it something that was broader and covered a lot of things. But it really spoke to the heart, I think, of what we want to do, in all different ways. So, I'm glad we have it.
Any other comments with respect to the mission? All those in favor with the mission being "Prepare each student to be successful" with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion with respect to the vision?
We'll move to approve the vision statement as presented.
Second.
Okay. The vision, "The leading innovative school district empowering lifelong learners to strengthen our communities." Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Motion carries. A motion with respect to our beliefs.
Can I just ask a question about vision? Shouldn't that be a semicolon, not a comma?
Oh, they said it was a comma.
No.
No.
Really?
Uh-uh.
Connie, should that be a comma or a semicolon?
Comma.
Comma.
Thank you.
Seems right to me.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, teacher.
Moving on to the beliefs.
I'm still struggling with that.
Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve, sorry, move to approve the belief statement for the district as presented.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? This was a really incredible experience with respect to the beliefs. I mean, there were all sorts of tables around the room, and there was collaboration and discussion and moving things around. Ultimately, it was a lot of wordsmithing. I would say that the substance was what was important. We broke it out into categories, students, staff, education, finances, et cetera. And I think that the committee did an incredible job of pulling this all together in a fairly short period of time, so...
I just want to add, I was, this really spoke to me when I looked at this, because I wasn't a part of the meetings, which I was sad that I wasn't a part of the meetings. But when I read the beliefs, that just really spoke to me. And I applaud the people that put that list together, because I just felt like, and I can, you know, feel like today, that that is our district. And I really like it. I'm really happy to read it. It's a great product.
All right. All those in favor in the motion with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed? Motion carries.
If I may, you used the word, Trish, passionate. There was passion during those two days, in terms of what a word means and how a word can change a statement. It was a very great experience for those there. It'll now be used as the foundation of Phase Two, which is next week. I believe the committee is the same. Amy is going to be there instead of Meg, due to schedules, and that was set up ahead of time. The purpose of the next, or Phase Two, is to develop our priorities or our goals. And of course, that really then is the meat of the strategic plan. And when we move those forward to the board, I will then have the responsibility of assigning those to the appropriate teams, if I may, to actually then create actions and strategies to meet those particular goals.
Okay, moving on to Item C, which is meeting dates, times, locations. Our next meeting will be June 12th. We'll start that at 6:00 at this point, because of the candidates. Item 14, Closed Session. I need a motion to go into closed session under 1985 Part N1, Part N C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically administrative position, strategy, and offer.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Dan, second by Amy, to go into closed session. Could you call the roll, Sue?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yep.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
You have a quorum seven present, one excused.
What? You just called the quorum. The motion carries.
Okay, we're in closed session. Let's take 10 minutes to set up the room.
It's Monday, it's okay.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Passes.